Something in the agreement.
It is now six o'clock. For those of you that weren't here for the budget workshop, welcome. We already did the indication and the pledge, so we won't do it again, but we will take a moment of silence for any Florida State fans that are out there.
Really? Really? All right. I got it.
All right. You're good to go now?
I'm good.
All right. Moving on to the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. You've got August 13th, 14th, September 4th, and September 6th minutes from the workshops and the budget and the regular board meetings. We got any questions or changes?
Make motion to approve?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, we got consent agenda. I've got item 11 to be pulled, 17. Any others? Hear none, I need a motion to approve 2 through 10, 12 through 16, and 18 through 20. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, item number 11, approval of scope of work slash agreement with Dewberry Engineers for professional services for Suwannee County Fairgrounds. I think Ms. Pravat had or...
Jimmy, Jimmy.
I gotta turn my microphone on. Okay. Ms. Chairman, I ask to pull this particular one. The terms of the contract that as presented by Dewberry do not conform with our continuing engineering agreement that we have with them, particularly when we get over to the standard terms and additions, which is attachment B. Note down at the bottom, it says that it was revised 117, and our agreement back with them isn't of the terms that are applicable in 2016. And so, I know that this is not the right one. I've looked for the 13 version, which was updated in 16, and I couldn't find it today. But what I would like to do is, you know, if you move forward with this, to go ahead and approve, because I don't have any problem with the remainder of the thing, which would be a task order as attachment A of the scope of work agreement. But then let me to make sure that we have the appropriate exhibit B attached, instead of the exhibit B that is attached here today. I know it's not the right one, guys, because I would never allow y'all to sign one that has an arbitration clause in it, and that you are going to be sued in another county, all kinds of things in here. So I know this is not the right one.
Did you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Ms. Gray. Any questions? Any questions on this end?
No.
So I'd ask you to approve it after council's review, an attachment of the appropriate agenda.
Where the new attachment be?
Right.
That's the motion I make then.
Got a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Moving on, item 17, authorization to spend up to $50,000 in rental fees for John Deere graders to cover overage of hours on leased graders. Ms. Hancock, did you have a question? I know you discussed it with me briefly, but...
Hey, just real quickly, and I've talked with Mr. Harris before the meeting. On the graders, very simply boiled it down to one question. Do we pay for only the hours over the 3,000, or do we have to mine in the 195-hour increment?
125-hour increments.
So if it's got less, we don't use that?
I guarantee you, if we have to pay for it, we're going to use every bit of our 125 hours.
Okay.
That's the way we're going to address it. And this is worst-case scenario in my mind. We're trying to budget for what could be. We don't need these at the end of the year. I think I shared previously that if we had had a hurricane come through here this year, our hours would have definitely gone over, and we would have paid $60 an hour for the overage. And we've tried to monitor those and keep them down within our allotted hours in those leases. But the way we're going with this 125 hours, we're dropping that to $13.96 an hour, which is actually the hourly rate that we're paying for those leases that we have on the equipment. So this is a much more cost-effective way to go. But we're only going to use it if we need it. We could be this time next year looking back saying, well, we only spent $10,000 out of that 50. We may not spend any. Just depends on an event coming through here.
Well, I just want to know if we, so we had to pay for 125-hour increments, use them for a hundred, additional 125 hours?
We'll spurn up every, every one of those hours, if we, if we have to rent it.
Just don't park them and, you know, start them up, park them somewhere, and let them run. Put them out on the road.
We've got a mechanism for making sure that doesn't happen.
Thanks, sir. Was there any follow-up questions from board here? Anything else? Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All righty. Moving on to staff reports. You got James Summers, Public Safety Director.
Commissioner's Chairman, I'd like to thank you for the budget workshops. Like everybody else, they went very smoothly. I think everybody was happy with outcomes. Definitely progression from the past. As far as fire rescue goes, we're getting...
You didn't have to fight as hard this year.
That's correct. As far as the engines that we did discuss last year, we should be taking possession of those in November for delivery. The new ambulances that we're working on currently that we just put in this budget, we will be taking possession of those in March, and the tankers probably somewhere around June. As far as, I know we talked about water supply during, during the budget a little bit. I think our weight paid off a little bit. I was able to acquire about $100,000 worth of steel water tanks at no cost. It was from a chemical company that was closing, and it's just going to cause us the move of the tanks from Ocala to here. So we're going to be able to do the Market Road site and Lurville site with no cost of the tanks, just the cost of setups. So we were able to acquire four 15,000-gallon tanks and six 6,000-gallon tanks. So we need 30,000 per site. So we're going to be able to do the Lurville Market Road site first, just the cost of the move of the tanks and setup fees. So we'll be able to save about $100,000. Any other questions for fire rescue?
Ms. Chairman, I have one. You said we're going to take possession in March and June of the tankers and trucks?
The ambulances that we pre-ordered, we should be taking possession in March, and then the tanker trucks in June. The engines that we purchased beginning of this year, we should be taking possession in November.
So those are still...
They're in production. They, they sent me pictures. They just put the pumps on them, and they're working on the back body portion of it, paint, graphics, all that fun stuff, compartments and things. So we'll have to go out, inspect them, make sure they meet the spec that we put out, and then once they do that, they'll wrap them and ship them to us. And not the wrap as far as Alvin's wrap, white wrap for bugs. We're not doing Alvin's wrap, but...
That was good.
Any other questions?
I'm proud about that wrap. Randy's going to be driving it one day.
I used to drive it, before it had the wrap.
But we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to general business, discuss possible board action, purchase of knuckle boom trucks for solid waste department. Randy Harris?
This has been an evolving issue. I know we've spoken about it several times. Board approved the acquisition of a couple of these. These are the large, heavy-duty, larger knuckle boom trucks than what we currently have with tandem axles on the rear. We had bid the trucks in 2017, and then when the board went ahead and awarded the bid, we notified the company, and they said, well, now because of the discussions of tariffs and steel price uncertainty, we can't tell you when we're going to be able to deliver the trucks because of the cabin chassis. So they wanted us to go ahead and enter into an agreement, and which would have obligated us without the trucks. And we told them that we don't do business that way. So we told them to get in touch with us when they felt like they could give us some reasonable certainty on a delivery date of the trucks. And it rocked along until, actually, July of this year. And even then, they couldn't tell us they were going to be able to deliver the trucks anytime soon. What they did say was that they thought maybe they could get us trucks by the middle of next year. And the price had gone up to $377,568, and these were Freightliner cabin chassis. So when we had the last conversation, Commissioner Sessions made some phone calls, and we finally discovered that, I think it's Extran can get the Volvo cabin chassis, and then the box and the boom and everything would have to be put on it. But the Volvo cabin chassis is more expensive, but they are available. And they gave us an availability of 60 to 90 days, and that's really the time that it takes to put the boxes and the booms and everything together with that chassis and build a way that it needs to be set up for us. So you've now got the price, that third scheduled at the bottom, $451,763 for those. And I just want to point out something to you. If you consider the Volvo cabin chassis, we have had an just incredible performance from the Volvo product. We had Volvo loaders that were just excellent for a long time. We've got two dump trucks, the two dinosaurs that we have today. You know, we auctioned off most of those old dump trucks that we had for years, with the exception of the two Volvos that we had, because they continue to run real well, and they've run right alongside these newer dump trucks that we're running today. We've kept them for spares. We've put them in regular use on, on a regular basis when we can get extra drivers working on the weekends, those that want to work part-time. So the Volvo product should hold up extremely well for us for, I would say, probably 15 years. We should get excellent service out of those, if you want to consider those. But that's the only one that we've been able to find of the manufacturers that could actually tell us when we might anticipate receiving the trucks.
Any questions from board?
This would still be, the proposal would still be that we go through the lease-to-company, and this would be a lease to own at the end of the, I think it was four years.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, four years.
We approve this, and then will we approve this contingent upon, obviously, the lease agreement coming back to us if we approve later date?
Right, the agreement would have to come back.
What kind of a, a four-year lease, just dividing this $451 up into four, for about $100,000 a year?
I think those were even payments, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were even. If you just took that total and divided it... Right. And it was coming out of the solid waste budget. It wasn't interfering with your general revenues or anything.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
I just want to make, make it known that I want to abstain from the vote due to personal conflict.
Okay.
Let me clarify that. You know, the public's out there with all manner of theories. Mr. Sessions doesn't own the company or the trucks. He is related to someone that's involved with a company that handles this type of truck. So he had asked about declaring a conflict, and it's better to be conservative.
What is the NJPA contract? What is NJPA?
That's a nationally competitively bid contract, like Sheriff's Association contract that we're members of. We also purchase our dumpsters and just a number of, I think even computers and some other things we purchase through NJPA.
The ones for the $277,000, what were they?
Freight liners. They are unavailable.
Those were freight liners.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. We need the trucks. It's a better product. It's a more expensive product, but I think it was more costly to us to be out of the business of having them than to wait to an unknown date for them to come in.
All of you know how much more volume we're trying to manage in these collection sites, and these, these trucks with larger boxes are going to be a huge improvement over what we have today to service those sites.
Ms. Chairman?
In addition to what we have, or the replacement of what we have?
For now, they're going to be in addition to. We don't plan to unload those other trucks. I mean, we've got other needs and road department. We'll ultimately one day come in here and say, we want to take the oldest, the ones that we're having the most problems with, and auction them off. We'll ask you the board to surplus those when that time comes.
But we can, we can loan them to the road department for debris pickup or whatever they need.
Yeah, if we have a big event come through here...
As long as they're not trying to move trees with them.
They'd be available for them.
Move trees that are still standing.
Yeah.
Well, that was my next question. I was...
Yes, sir.
I had a question. Is the size of the truck, not necessarily the freight liner versus Volvo, but the yards, per square yard, is it the same size we looked at before? Or is this a larger?
This is the same size that we started with on these, which is considerably larger than the trucks we currently have.
That's right. Okay.
Much heavier duty boom, lift is a lot heavier.
Right.
The box is much larger.
I know we talked about all that. I just want to make sure we wouldn't sacrifice in that part for the truck.
The boom and the box is the same one we looked at before, and it's just the only thing different is going to be the chassis.
Cabin chassis.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right.
Everything is same, just what's underneath is different.
Gotcha.
And we're actually putting a better product underneath it now, too.
Underneath that, right.
All right. Any other questions?
Rocking hot place. We need the trucks. You can do it. A better built truck, and it's more money.
Any other questions? Got a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussing? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on, item 23, discuss possible board action bids for intersection improvements at State Route 51, County Route 250, and 145th Road. Bids were opened on September 11th. Bid solicitation number was 2018-07. Ms. Harris?
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, the summary version is the bids are very high. You receive two bids. The numbers are extremely high. When, I mean, comparatively speaking, you start evaluating unit costs for the pay items in here, they're a whole lot higher than what you would traditionally expect. Having said that, I had a conversation, you know, there's this store, this all started, well, actually, we started having a discussion earlier on about correcting the alignment of 250.
Yeah, we had that discussion about three years ago.
And then, more recently, we had the applicants come in that want to build the store right there on the other side. So we started the conversation with them about correcting that side at the same time. So we bid all of this together, the improvements that they would need on their side of the road, the improvements the county needs to do. The bids have come in, the numbers are high. I had a conversation with the developer, I think it was Friday, when I had a conversation with him, and said, you know, we may want to look at some other options. They have a paving company, and said that they could probably handle the paving. I said, well, we could, we could potentially do the base work. Outside of that, it's a matter of purchasing asphalt. We typically contract out the striping signs. Some signs would have to be purchased. So another option would be that we consider entering into a developers' agreement between the county and the developer, and come up with a more cost-effective improvement out there that is more cost-effective for both parties. So that's why I had mentioned the seven, set aside $75,000, identifying that in a line earlier, because if you combine the numbers that you've got in front of you, they're very high.
So what you, what you need from us then is a motion to reject all bids and...
You would have to reject all bids if you want to consider the other option.
And then we need to, but that's, that's what I hope we do, reject the bids and then authorize you, myself, Ms. Pravat, to negotiate a interlocal, not interlocal, but a...
An amended, amended development agreement.
Yeah, because we've already got one with them.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Just trying to understand these. On this engineer's opinion, probable cost, where it gives the engineer's unit price, and then it gives the two, the two contractors' bid prices, is it that much difference between the expected price, or for, like, for instance, the mobilization cost being quadruple on the first one and, and a lot more than that on the second one? Is, am I reading this correct, that the suggested price we would, should see is around $46,90 or something to that effect?
Correct.
We're seeing $18,000 and $26,000?
Right. And the maintenance of traffic items on there. I mean, you think about improving an intersection, there isn't a whole lot of maintenance of traffic involved, and you've got... You know, the engineer's suggested price would be just under $3,000, but the actual bids came in at, one of them at $44,000 plus, one of them at almost $17,000.
If we do the base work, is that something that, can we, is that something we can handle? We have the expertise to do that? I don't, I don't know.
Well, we can do the base work.
Well, I mean, that's what we've been doing on these chip sill roads. We can, we've been in the road building business for years.
Yeah, we can go out there and build the base, get it laid out, build the base, and then, you know, as part of our agreement, come up with some agreement on the, having the asphalt laid on that base, and then split the cost of the striping and signage. And our people are certified for maintenance of traffic.
Yes.
Yesterday and today.
How far that, this, this road behind the store, how far would it go down, Joe?
I think it stops right about where their ingress egress point is on 145th. It doesn't go very far down that road. What I would propose is going at least 20, 25 feet beyond that driveway on that back side, so that later, if that road were to be improved, it doesn't interfere with that driveway.
Right.
So if we're looking at these, these alternates, so this would, what we're, the scope of work that we'll do would look more like the alternate bid, A or B?
Well, the scope of work is, if you took those two and combined them, one of them is for the 51 side, the other's for the 145th side. That's $249,000, $250,000.
Oh, so these aren't, sorry, I do see that.
Yeah, I propose...
No, that's, that's for one side of 51 and the other side of 51.
Setting $75,000 aside.
I'm all for saving money.
All right. I'm, I'm okay. So is that a motion to reject the bids?
I move that we reject the bids.
Got a motion to reject all bids by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion?
Just one more. One more. How much of it would you say that we need to do when we, I know we're going to do the base work and things like that, but I mean, a little more detail on that, I mean...
Well, we'd have to go out there and, what we call boxing it out. We just undercut, box it out, put lime rock in with density after it's laid out. There's a piece of asphalt that'll, some asphalt on 51 that's got to be milled, and I've spoken to the engineer about this. It's because DOT prefers it that way, so that it has to be restripped to accommodate that intersection then. And that's what they prefer be done in order to re-strike, rather than to just try to go out there and grind the striping off. That would have to be done, some new signs, a couple of signs on 51 indicating that there's an intersection ahead. And then we will decide what we're going to do with the removal. We'd have to remove the old pavement on the 250 side.
250 side, yeah.
And it would still leave access to the store there on the back, away from 51, back over to 250. So it's really going out there and cutting it and putting the rock in, putting density on it, maintaining the traffic when we're out there working, the milling of the asphalt, and then somebody else would have to actually do the paving.
Right. Is this something we got time to jump on and, and handle, in a reasonable time with all our other projects and things?
We will have to jump on it soon, because I think that store's projected to open in November.
That's what I was, that's kind of was a worry of mine. That's why I wanted to make
sure we had the means.
It's going to be a lot easier if we just go in there and blow it out and get out before the store opens. Well, what I typically tell them is they have two weeks to get it done. Because it's two months. No, our guys, I mean, if, if you look at it really, it isn't a large project. If it were a large project, I feel different about it.
What is it, probably less than half a mile total? It's, it's less than half a mile, quarter mile? You hear that, Don? We're only talking a quarter mile.
Yeah. I have just kind of more words also about the timeline of it, and all as well as make sure we had the manpower to get it done.
Oh, we'll get out there and jump in.
Knock it out.
You got any more questions, Don? I had a motion by Commissioner Richardson, right? Second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Do we need a motion for y'all to go ahead and start negotiating a amendment, or just...
Just direction.
I mean, if we're going to reject the bids, we need to go ahead and say, you got everybody approval on that? Anything else on that item, Ms. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Item 24, discuss possible board action, RFP 2018-9, cardboard and newspaper recycling. Ms. Harris?
The easy approach to this is to just recommend rejecting the bid, the single bid that we got on this.
I agree with that.
I, I think it's high. I was surprised, actually, I wasn't surprised. I'd already been told there wasn't any money in this business now because of the market. And I, I think that that is true. It is because of the market. But unless the market changes and there's some value to this paper, it wouldn't really make sense, I wouldn't think, to pay someone this amount of money to take it. The company that had been servicing these sites, quite frankly, I'm surprised that they didn't submit a bid, because the number that they had discussed with us was less than this. They had not been charging anything for years when there was a market... They had not been charging anything for years when there was a market for the product. But more recently, they just said they were just losing money, it was costing them, they're actually losing money trying to service these sites. So they came back with a projected charge we couldn't do anything about without bidding, but then they didn't submit a bid.
Where, did they tell you where they're losing money at? Is it the newspaper side or the cardboard side?
A bit of both.
Well, the, I sit on the board with ARC and they make money on the cardboard side, they don't make any money on the newspaper side. That's why they didn't bid it because they didn't want to mess with the newspaper.
When I had spoken to the gentleman before that's been servicing those sites for years, I don't remember him making the complaint.
I got you.
His, his issue was he was losing money trying to continue to service these sites without being paid. And he was being paid, I mean, he was making money before when the market was there.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Something's brought up to me back two years ago, as a matter of fact, about these, these recycling containers in general, that I want to clarify to make sure it wasn't rumor. What I heard was is that paper is the only thing that we, that we have a contract for recycling, that we had a contract for recycling. The, the plastic glass just basically was dumped because we had no one to pick it up. Is that true?
Yes, we didn't have containers out there for plastic and glass.
There's, there were other containers, there were more than just the paper recycling.
We had aluminum cans, people that put cans out there, we were taking that to the recycling site.
Okay, so we don't have any, any other recycling, since there's no market for paper. I mean, I don't want to get into a, into a spat with someone who's concerned about environmental concerns and definitely, I think we can recycle, we can recycle, we should recycle, but if there's no one to take them because of the money in it, why do we have them? I mean, if, if it costs the county money to recycle more and more, recycle any kind of products for that matter, why don't we just-
Well, up until now, it wasn't costing us money.
In, in this case, he had provided his own containers as well.
Oh, okay.
So we weren't out anything as long as he was making money from the market side of it when the product brought some money, but it isn't now. And he wasn't telling us something that wasn't correct, I checked into it and found plenty of articles on the problems. So you have to decide if you want to pay to get rid of, if you want to pay to get rid of or recycle newspaper or cardboard? Or do you want to wait until there's a market for it and, you know, someone can continue to doing what he was doing? I mean, it wasn't costing us anything and he was handling it.
How many tons was he taking off or do you have that?
That with me now. He, he had a spreadsheet that he had put together at the time. But see, I'd have to go back, I, I can't remember now if he had separated cardboard from the newsprint either.
Yeah, I don't know about the newspaper side, I know the cardboard side, we get about $80 a ton for. There's no way for us to compress it.
The law wants to get the containers and servicing, the problem, see, the other side of this is the expense side.
I understand.
It's one of the main money, but when you incur the expense side of it, that's-
They, and, and they don't, I had a long talk with, we decided as board that we're not going to pursue it.
Yeah.
But I was just, I didn't know if, if we had a way to compress the cardboard and, and sell it to the same vendor that they're selling it to because they're already coming here to pick it up.
If the board wants to purchase a machine for baling that stuff, we could do it and then we need labor to handle that as well.
Sounds like to me that that would be more than $30,000.
Yeah.
I mean, my recommendation would be to wait till there's a market for this product. And, I mean, this man was doing a great job of recycling the product, which everybody's in favor of recycling, but when it costs you, you know, there has to be a breaking point there. And I have to believe that at some point, there will be a market for it again, but right now, there isn't.
Is there, is there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other way we could reach out to another county or another municipality maybe doing this and piggyback on them and?
Well, if we were, if we had a Jacksonville within 10 miles of us, it might be easy.
Yeah.
Problem is when you're dealing with small rural communities and there's not enough volume, the difficulty here is transportation expense.
Right.
It's picking it up, hauling it, servicing the sites and trying to cover that expense and then try to make some money on top of that.
So our current provider is not going to continue?
He is not going to continue doing this.
As of?
Well, he hasn't told me as of yet, but he isn't going to continue doing it. He told me he just couldn't afford to continue doing it.
What about these companies that do sorting on everything and they just pick up, they just take one container out, you dump everything in it and their, their sorters figure it all out? Do they, are there any better prices in there or?
Mixed stream recycling, it runs the same issue. I spoke to waste management about that a couple of years ago, probably three or four years, if I can remember. You end up at the same issue. Can they make enough money to cover their costs of servicing sites and at the same time make a profit on top of that?
It's more about the fact that we're just a small community, we're just a small county and-
Yeah, see, when they're doing the mixed use or mixed stream recycling, typically they're going to want to offer that service in a location where they have the facility set up to separate that. That is very expensive, that's a very expensive setup to separate that. So you would need to be next door to a large, large city with a significant population base and make it worth that company considering making that type of investment.
What if we, is it possible to consider, instead of getting rid of, of any recycling for the time being and put it off until there's a market, working with a company like this instead of going to 14 different locations, come into, to just one location, if anybody wants to recycle, let them take it to the transfer station and put a, a container there and let them recycle through it? Or maybe a couple of containers there where they can just come pick up and they won't have to charge us for over so many stops?
I, I just don't think you're going to get no volume or anybody take it. Most people that are recycling are recycling because it's there, it's convenient.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about, you know, I don't want to spend the money to do that. I don't know how much volume we have.
Well, I think before we, I don't know how long we have before we have, if we, can we hold off on rejecting this tonight? And the reason I'm asking is, I'd like to know what the tonnage is that he's picking up every month.
What I'd recommend is that you reject this bid and then let us re-advertise.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just want to know what the tonnage is before we start adding it to our daily haul.
Call around to some other locations and see if we can generate some interest. We'll just try that and if we can't get any more interest then, then we've done about all we can do. But I would reject this one, I know this one's high, and then let us re-advertise it as if we can find some more companies that will say it's fine.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that, I just don't want us to start throwing it in the trucks to take to, about Austin before we know what that cost is going to be. It may add more than, may, may add more to the tonnage that, than what they're charging to haul it without knowing what that tonnage rate is.
Just if you do reject it, then I need you to follow up.
Author, re-advertise, so reject it and can we do that in one motion or does that need to be two motions?
I'd make two motions.
Okay.
I move that we reject the, the bid.
Got a motion, reject the bid by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. They'll have a motion to re-advertise?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, was that you, Mr. Hale?
Yes, sir.
Did I catch you about to say something?
It's okay.
Okay. I got a motion to re-advertise by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hale, any discussion?
Yes, sir. One question, would that re-advertising, is this, would this motion be broad enough to re-advertise in any way we can to get any type of interest? I mean, like, looking into every, any and every possible, or we, is this is just a narrow advertisement just for the paper?
Well, and, and I agree with it and you mentioned something, Chairman, about maybe getting an idea exactly how much, or one of y'all did, how much the use is and do we need that many containers when we re-advertise?
Well, what I'll do is go back and look and talk to the gentleman that services those sites now and look at what he gave me and see if that distinction was made between cardboard and newspaper. And we'll provide as much information as we can. And we'll talk about the number of times per week we think the sites need to be serviced, try to narrow it down some. See, I think this was too much service anyway for those sites. This is the way it was submitted, this isn't like an RFP or something else where you can go back and negotiate something. So, because there are some of these sites that don't need to be serviced that frequently.
Right.
So I'll just try to obtain from him as much information as I can since he's servicing himself, himself. He can tell me what he wants me to know.
Well, I know, we have a couple of sites in my area that are really close together. We don't, I don't know why we would need to have a, if we're not getting that much volume, we can just send them to the other site, have one stop for it instead of two.
Commissioners, I'm going to just comment on something entirely unrelated to newspaper. We are soon going to have a similar conversation on tires because the company that's been taking the tires, that location has been bought out because the power company has decided that it's cheaper to produce electricity in another form other than using the tires. And they went ahead and they're shutting that location down. So a lot of governments, local governments now are kind of running around trying to figure out what are we going to do with tires now? It's a big issue and I'll be bringing that back to you soon.
Okay.
But we'll get real creative on that.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on the re-advertising? You got a question?
No.
Oh, we got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Anything else on that item, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to item 25, discuss any possible board action on any issues associated with the wastewater.
We don't have any.
Don't have anything on that one?
Yes.
Moving on to additional agenda items, item number one, approval of agreement with Florida Department of Health and the amount of $100,000 for operation of Swan County Health Department for 2018, 2019. Anybody got any questions on this, Mr. Harris, you got anything?
I don't have any questions about the agreement, but it might be a great opportunity to just comment on something that we've discussed before.
Okay.
If you will allow me.
Yeah, go ahead. It was either you or was it Mr. Pravat? Mr. Pravat, you had a question, didn't you?
My, my question had to do with, and we'd spoke about this before, the, our personnel rules and regulations, this has to do with a vehicle.
Ah, that's right.
Vehicle for the health department. Our personnel rules and regulations require that if someone has an accident with a vehicle, we automatically send them for a drug test. And we had an incident in the past year and the employee is an employee of the health department. And when we notified the health department, I think the gentleman initially agreed that he was going to go have the drug test done, then he changed his mind and said, no, I don't have to do that because our rules and regulations don't require me to. We need to decide how we're, the board needs to decide how you want to handle that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it a county-owned vehicle?
It is a county-owned vehicle.
County-owned vehicle, I think it should, we provide by the rules, what we have, the county have.
Yeah, we, we are state employees, I have state employees, contract has been for years and years and years that the county provides us a location and facility and that they cover the insurance on the vehicles. We do have a drug-free workplace policy that is by the state, which does require and allow us that if there is probable cause or suspicion, we can require our employees to be drug screened. I think the county's policy is a little more stringent than that and they require it automatically. Is that right, Mr. Harris?
Requires it automatically if there is an accident or just a vehicle. Is there anything that would preclude your location from including that same policy?
I'm-
Can you expand your policy higher?
No, no, we cannot because it is not a, it's not a local policy, it is a Florida Department of Health state policy that we are governed by their personnel policies and procedures. I've inquired about doing something relative to that, to making it more restrictive for our employees to be required to take a drug screen at the time of any vehicular accident. And our attorney has advised us that, no, we cannot do that. That if we have probable cause and suspicion, then yes, we can require our employee to take a drug screen and comply with the drug-free work policy.
What's the fine, how do you find probable cause?
I think say a wreck don't define probable cause?
Probable cause would be from observation, knowing, observing the employee, talking to the employee, seeing if there are any signs of impairment in any way.
And, and the person that does that has to be a certified, trained observer to be able to make that call with a witness. It's the way we always had to do it.
Yeah, we, well, I've, I've got staff that are medical staff that we can make that observation and can make that call.
So at what point do you, does law enforcement make that call for you? So if you're in a situation where you have an accident in, in the sheriff's department or the highway patrol says, yeah, there's suspicion of it, are you going to make, is it your call to make or is it their call to make?
At the time of, of an incident that the law enforcement's involved in, if they've, if they have probable cause or subject the employee to, whether it be a DUI or driving under the influence of drugs or anything, that would be a situation that they would, they would handle that employee if they make an arrest or whatever, then that becomes a personnel issue that I'll address through our personnel policies and procedures.
I guess what I'm getting at is this, is if in this case, those cases, those are criminal investigations at that point and, and that's an outside agency making that, making that, that recommendation or making that requirement, why can't another outside agency make that require, requirement on our end?
But in the rest, the rest question about the accident, we would be, just like Mr. Carey had said, we, we ourselves would, would observe the, the subject, you know, if we had any smell or anything in plain view in the vehicle, it would be our, our observation and training of whether we would go forth with either, if there was injury, we would draw blood or so we would, you know, do the field, field body test on scene, ask them about the tox lizer, take them out of the jail and tox lizer. So it all would be the same, just like Mr. Carey said, we would observe it and, and anything reserved through our, our training and probable cause, but then we would go forth with either the, the drawing the blood, doing the field body test or doing the tox lizer.
Well, our policy says that you have to have a, a drug test whenever you get in a wreck. Is that directly related to our insurance policy? Or is that just, is that policy?
County policy.
That's county policy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, the insurance isn't requiring it. We did that as part of our policy and I'm going to tell you that it's paid off.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, no, 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 I'm not disputing that. I was just wondering if by them not doing it, if we were putting ourselves at jeopardy with the insurance company? That was my question for that was.
Well, and we would be willing to look at reimbursing the county for whatever cost is incurred for covering our vehicles that we have. If that would be a situation y'all would want to consider, we'd look at a way to, to repay you for whatever costs that you've incurred to insure those vehicles.
Okay, under Article 7, you know, we're responsible for that, so you want to pull that, pull that out of here?
No.
You recommending to pull it out?
No, I'm not recommending to pull it out because this, we as a state agency, from the Department of Health, we can't go get insurance coverage. We would have to either get it through the county or I would have to have a situation involved through the Department of Management Services and to see about them taking our And for, I know that as far as the health department has been concerned for a many number of years, these vehicles have been covered by the county as well as y'all have provided us with the facility that we're in currently.
Yeah.
So this is a situation where- So, this is a situation where statute again requires that we provide this, these things, like the vehicle?
Yes.
But...
Well, not necessarily the vehicle. I mean, not necessarily providing the vehicle. What they do is, well, they, they purchase the vehicle, and then they transfer ownership to the county, and the county then insures the vehicle. That's purchased through the trust fund.
It's purchased through the county health department trust fund, and anytime the vehicle is sold, then those funds, generally when the vehicle is sold, it has no value because those, the tires have been driven off of it, but that money goes back into the trust fund.
All right.
The trust fund purchases automobile, but the county provides the insurance?
The county provides the insurance as well as the physical facility that we're located in, yes.
Take on the...
Yes, it has to be, well, it has to be titled in the county's name in order for y'all to provide insurance.
It seems to me that we have a choice, that we can either stop providing a vehicle or we can do what they tell us to do.
Well, I mean, we just can't impose on their employees a different, a different rule. They can voluntarily, I mean, they can voluntarily do that, but as employees, you know, necessarily, they can't necessarily enforce that against them.
Will this put us in a...
Under our insurance provisions right now, it's, it's not affecting, you know, what we're doing. And I'm, with the number of vehicles that we have, I don't believe that our policy of having, you know, the drug testing and stuff gets us a discount on our insurance because of that. Being a drug-free workplace, you know, like we are, does, but having the immediate test is not something that's required under the coverage.
It isn't required from a payment standpoint, though, like all insurances, your premiums are predicated on your experience on claims.
Right.
Right. Well, my question was really about, since we're doing something different in this situation, are we putting ourselves in jeopardy of losing in court for county employees that get subjected to a, subjected to a drug test after an accident?
No, because that's part of our personnel policy.
Right, we're county agency and they're state agency.
So, this policy towards their, that vehicle has nothing to do with our personnel policy?
Correct.
Okay. We do, we do gotta do.
Sounds to me like we're really just not gonna get nowhere with it.
Yeah, right. And just like you said, it comes down to that's the county employee versus the state employee.
Well, like you said, this, they have an option to acquire insurance through another division. It's just royal payment, but to, you know, to be able to do that...
It is, it's a very lengthy process, and there's no guarantee that they would take it. Because they do have requirements on the vehicles, and they be a...
And they have the option to...
They be a certain year and certain mileage and majority of our, we only have two vehicles that would qualify.
All right, well, anything y'all want to add or do? I don't like it, but it is what it is. Does you have anything else on this contract?
I initially had a request. We have a reporting requirement that was dropped last year. I think it's still statutorily required, and it used to be quarterly, and now it's annually. And it was dropped from the language, even though they have to do it, but they won't notify us that they do it. And I was just asking if they would consider putting back in the second pa, second paragraph, you know, the second sentence of this fifth paragraph about the reporting requirements.
Right, this state contract from DOH, we have, I have no problem us including that language. We report anyway on variances in our budget expenditures, so that, that's not an issue with us.
Yeah, that's something that I would just like to seize, that report. Gentlemen, okay. And it, we had it all the way up until last year, and they changed the requirement from reporting quarterly to annually, and then they took it out of the contract because it didn't have to have the report come to us, it was just to be posted on the website. And they, so I was just asking, why couldn't they send the report to us instead of just us having to be reminded to go out there and find it? I mean, I don't have a problem one way or the other, as long as we can have an agreement with, you know, the local, that they will provide us with the report, but...
We'll provide you with any information at any time you'd like.
Uh, don't tell me that.
Can we add that in there to that, when y'all file it online, that y'all can just email it to Ms. Harris, Ms. Profat?
Yeah, I mean, we can include whatever language you'd like.
Okay, specifically, then, I'd like to propose an amendment to paragraph five that'll say, "A report detailing the status of public health as measured by outcome measures and similar indicators will be sent by the CHD Director/Administrator to the parties no later than October 1 of each year." And for informational purposes, this is the standard quality assurance county health profile report located on the Division of Public Health Statistics and Performance Management internet site, intranet site, intranet, not internet.
And if you afford that language directly to me?
I think you have it.
Yeah. I don't do well sometimes on those SharePoint sites that the state agencies refer us to.
Well, that's, and that's why, okay. And with that addition, I'm fine with the agreement.
All right. Any other questions from board members?
Should I move to approve it with, with the changes Council's made?
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson with the changes in the council? Second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, additional agenda item number two, discuss possible board action, tax collector's funding request.
I have a question right off the bat.
All right, go right ahead, sir.
It just says fiscal year 2017, so it's 1617 or 1718?
From my discussion with her and from looking over it, it was 1617, I believe.
So, that budget's...
Not the current year that we're in, but the year that we have closed out and been audited for.
Right, right. So, it's already closed. I don't know how you can close out a budget and audit the budget and have the audit come back and then amend it after the fact by adding money to it. So, I don't know how this can be done legally.
I haven't seen it, and I, I haven't seen it until...
Right now.
Have we...
I'm not real certain about this one. Can we get this one to the next agenda?
Well, I think the reason we put it on here was what Mr. Powell was saying, that it had to be finished up by this...
I think it's gotta be finished before October 1 of this year.
Right.
Now, I, I can't answer your question, Commissioner Sessions, but, you know, this request actually came last year, they needed a letter to send to the state saying the Board of County Commissioners was gonna pay if they had a shortfall. Remember, clearly, someone knew a year ago they were gonna have a shortfall, or that letter wouldn't have come, because that's the first time we've received a letter of that nature. So, the board directed me to go ahead and send the letter. We did that.
Yeah.
Then we just recently got this request, so I spoke to Mr. Powell about it, and he indicated that even though the tax collector has revenues in the current year...
Doesn't have a choice.
She can't use those revenues to pay the liability from the prior year.
From the prior year.
Right.
So, I spoke with her, she called Mr. Powell, and the way, what happened was in 2016-17, a longtime employee retired that they didn't anticipate, and it caused them to have a shortfall. So, they started the 1718 year in deficit. So, that's what triggered the statute that said that they had a letter, have a letter from us saying that if they were in deficit in six, in 1718, that we would fund the balance. They should have already came with this request, according to Mr. Powell, earlier in this year, and asked for this to be cleaned up. But for whatever reason, that didn't come. So, the letter doesn't apply to 1617, it's applied to 1718. So, when I talked to Ms. Jordan, she said to remove that letter from it. And the reason that we, when she sent the request, it was already after the agenda went out, and I had directed Mandy and Ms. Harris not to put it on the agenda. And then when we talked to Mr. Powell, he said, "No, it had to be done before October 1." So, then we put it back on the agenda for board discussion.
Because that's gonna affect the 1718 budget year.
So...
I think that's what he was saying, that it, and I'm putting words in his mouth, but it had to be paid out of the 1718 year to close out the 1617.
But the letter's been taken out.
Yeah, because the letter didn't go into effect until she ran a deficit year, which was 1617. And so, the letter went out to make sure that she was gonna be good for 1718 when they looked, but she's had a record year with the different things that they have going on with the fees that they're collecting. So, they're, they're to the good this year, but according to the auditor, they cannot use the monies from this year in their budget to go back and pay us. So, then that kinda leads to question, though, if we have to give her the check for $12,000 to clean up last year's budget, can they turn around and reimburse us?
Right.
Out of this year's budget?
And I guess my other question would be, and this would be maybe a Ken and Counsel question, if we're gonna fund them like any other, do we need a line item for that? And do we need to see their expenditures and, sir, I mean, to protect us by covering something like this?
Well, typically, typically for, you know, one of the officers, they, you know, they submit the summary budget. We've, different departments do different levels, you know, when they're reporting. What we have is oversight, not to be able to go into any of the specific line items other than there's certain statutory categories for each of the different officers that we can review. We can't go into any of the subcategories, like you're talking about going down into a line item, you know, in that fashion. But in the budget that y'all looked at this year, you know, carrying, you know, what does she have as a, you know, as a carry forward? You could have seen what that carry forward would have been, and then been able to reduce the overall budget by that amount.
Right.
And carry, carrying backwards. Otherwise, you've already approved that budget now, you have, you're required by statute to...
To do that.
To pay this money.
Yeah.
Okay. So, as a department, can they return funds back to the county?
Typically, they wouldn't. What they would do is show a carryover for the budget going forward. Ideally, they're supposed to, well, all of them are supposed to be, you know, zeroed out, and then the, the Board of County Commissioners then pays for any shortfall if they go overages. I know this sounds a little odd, but, you know, what they do is they go and spend, and then if they overspend, then we have to pay it by, by statute. So, you know, the, the way to look at it is at the beginning, you know, on the budget to see what the number is, a little closer paying, paying attention moving forward. Would you agree, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I agree. But I thought, you, you said that they can carry forward. I didn't think that their budget could carry forward.
They can carry forward on the...
I had a discussion with her, I could've swore to her that, she said they could not.
Mr. Powell said they have to zero it out.
They have to zero, but what they do is that they, they are supposed to put those extra revenues back in to us, which is then called, makes it zero.
So, they, they roll it over like any other constitutional would.
Well, they really don't roll it over inside their own...
No, they roll it back to the board.
Or roll it back to us.
I got you.
Well, interestingly, on the sheet that she did send, it shows a payment due to the county commission of $25,000. Okay? Well, I'm, my first question is, why wasn't that reduced by the $12,400 and whatever?
Because statutorily, she rolls it back to us, and then we turn back around and write her a check back instead of getting her...
Yeah, I wanna go back to something that Ms. Profat said. I think, I would agree that the board cannot alter the lines in their budget, but there's nothing that would preclude the board from looking at that budget.
Absolutely.
You haven't looked at that budget because you haven't received that budget. All you received was a piece of a balance sheet or a pay balance sheet. But you can't manipulate the lines that are in that budget if you actually had it in your possession.
Correct.
And Mr. Williams was just mentioning that you've been able to, be able to see an audit of the, of each of the officers. An audit, just like our audit, is, is not a line-by-line, go-through, anything and everything, you know, check going through. An audit is selected items that are looked at individually in the process of each of the budgets to see whether that particular item was done correctly. And that's what an audit does, rather than it be a full accounting of everything, you know, going through. If you went through like our county budget, going through any and every, you know, check expenditure or, you know, revenue, it'd just be out of the, out of the world. But that's why you have an audit. But an audit doesn't necessarily show you the detail that you want. It shows that the processes that they are utilizing are correct, and they're being able to account for the different items that they are making revenues, and then that they are doing the expenditures in a correct manner. To be able to understand what each of them are doing, you need to see the full, what their projected budgets are, and the detail in each of those items, so that you get a feel for the total, total of what's being expended, and in the manner that it's being expended. But, again, when you get those items, even though you have, and just for instance, this budget, her budget may be, you know, 25 pages long, but there's only certain subtotals that you're allowed to look at. I say look at, you can look at anything, but that you can make a judgment on, that those are the items that you have to total. You can't go in and pick, you know, say, and, and I'll just use, for instance, a sheriff's deputy. You know, he's got a personnel expenses is one of the six items in his budget that we're able to look at, a number there. We can look at that one sixth item and cut or trim it. We can't go look underneath there and that deputy or lieutenant so-and-so makes this amount of money. You can't mess with that.
Sure.
All you can mess with is whatever that one item is. Okay?
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, I'm looking at, so do, Harris talked about, do the Board of County Commissioners pay $25,000 late on the 7th? How is that? This, Ms. Prendt, or is it something that...
As I understand from what the discussion was earlier, that, I mean, by the end of her year, she's going to make or have generated more income, $25,000 for this year. Okay? So, but she can't, by the, the accounting practices of the state, she can't just subtract from the...
This is actually the 2017 balance sheet.
Right.
That's what this is. This is dated September 30, 2017.
So, that's a 1617.
It's in the current year.
So, you're saying that, that she has already written a check for 25,680, or 897 to us from last year?
I'm not saying that because I don't know.
That'd be a good question to ask, Ken.
Well, if it's under the liabilities portion of it, I would assume that that is something that is the shortfall, or what her anticipated shortfall would have been at 25, at $25,897, and it ended up only being the $12,000, whatever for that.
Yeah, because it is, September 30, 2017, but then it's saying it's, the 20th tax collector requesting $12,400, $63.90. But then on the combined balance sheet, it says she went to track the $25,000.
This would be easier, I think, if you had a budget from that department. You tell, I mean, if, if the question is one of accountability, you don't have adequate information here to know one way or the other. You've got a piece of a balance sheet that's dated, we don't know what happened with the 25. We know that there's a request for 12. If you requested a budget, you could see a clear picture, even though you can't go in and manipulate the lines, particularly in the case where it's after the fact, you might have a picture of what actually occurred. So, but in any event, I don't have any reason to believe that you, it's... So, but in any event, I don't have any reason to believe that you, it's an option for you to either pay it or not pay it. I think you have to pay it.
According to the auditor, we have to pay it. And I'm not questioning that. And I will just make a comment, too, that I don't believe this to be mismanagement on her part at all. This is the first time it's happened since she's been there, and it was just due to a employee retiring and the unfunded liabilities that all departments have with sick leave and comp time and annual leave and the payout. So it was just an early retirement that nobody anticipated. So I don't want the public or anybody thinking that this was oversight on their part. It wasn't. It's just the auditing side of it has turned into a mess and confusion.
Yeah, it's just confusing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I understand this, and I, I get it. We got, we need to...
That makes one out of five. I said, that makes one out of five.
Okay, I get it. We, we have a responsibility to pay this bill, and we're going to pay the bill regardless of how it comes back to us or if it comes back to us. And so if the motion that we need to make or whatever we got to do, the action that we need to take involves paying the bill, then I, then I will gladly make that motion to go ahead and pay it.
Yeah, we have to do that. So you got a motion to pay the $12,464 from Richardson?
But I'd also want, well, we can discuss that in the middle of it. Never mind.
I'll have a second.
No contingency.
I have a second to pay it. Got a second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion on paying the $12,464?
All I'd say is this, it sounds like to me that we fund, they spend, and, and we protect. And we need to have, I, I think we, we ought to be asking for a budget from them, just as a courtesy for the taxpayers to let them know what, what's, what's being spent. And we may not have a whole lot of oversight over it, and we certainly may not be able to make some changes, but, but I just feel like...
I think if you request it, which I don't, and I don't disagree, you're basically requesting it for just informational purposes.
For just informational purposes. I think that's all we can do.
But I think you make, it just, it may help you through your budget process. If you, if you see that budget, you may be to anticipate something.
Well, my biggest issue is this, is that this is, today, we, we've gotten two amendments, two amended things on our budgets, one from the property appraisers office, one from, from the, uh, tax collectors office.
The other one was the same situation. It was a retirement.
It would just be nice to have this a little bit earlier than, maybe during our budget workshops, retiring the last month that they...
Well, when they run, when they, when they run out of money, was this month, not last month. I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's what it is.
Courtesy to us.
I understand.
As much as it is a courtesy to them.
I understand. I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson to approve paying the funds. I got a second by Commissioner Sessions. Was there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no. All right. Did you have anything else you were adding after that?
No, sir, I think I made my point.
So your, your point was you, you want us to put a request in that we start receiving a budget?
I would, if that's a, got to be, take, if we have to take action on that, I think it's just...
I don't think we need to take action. I just think the board would make that request from now on and just ask for that in the budget workshops every year that we start having a budget provided.
It would help in the budget process, just have it to see.
Yeah, it would.
Yep. I don't think you need a motion on that. You kind of got direction from the board, do you?
You want me to make the request of the property appraiser and the tax collector to have a copy of their budgets each year?
Well, we get the property appraiser budget each year.
Talking about the detail.
Detail budget?
About that abbreviation.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
I would.
Yeah, I don't...
For informational purposes, nothing else?
Yeah.
Make our time here, like tonight, shorter.
Is that what you want?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I'll let them know that.
All right. That was the last additional agenda item. Next thing on the agenda is item 27, public comments and concern. Anybody wishing to speak if they'd make their way to the podium? Seeing none, we'll move on to administrator comments. Here's got anything?
I'm just going to make a brief comment that, I think there were five of us today, six counting Mr. Pittman. He was there, too, attending another class with DOT. We have classes at least once a month over in Lake City. And I'm telling you, I don't know when these end. Debbie, do you know when these end? Never? I was going to say, at the end of this thing, I'm going to buy some gold medals and give to all of your staff that has to participate in these things. They can be less than lively on occasion.
No, I imagine.
But I am very grateful that DOT has been good to us with funding, and I hope they continue to be. So if we've got to attend classes to ensure that happens, then we'll be there. That's all I had to say, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. Uh, members, board members' requests, comments? Mr. Haley, you got anything?
You did say me, right?
What?
You call me?
Yes, yes, I did. Sorry.
I do. Mr. Ford could not be here tonight, so he wanted me to mention this. They're going to have the marker dedication tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial Park downtown Live Oak. Want to remind everybody about that. That's for Captain Charlie James Ford. And the other thing I had...
And that's, that's right there by the, the big gun sign.
That's right, the Wrigley's gun sign.
The Wrigley, yeah.
Absolutely. 6:00 PM tomorrow. Would like for you guys, if you can make it, to come out and support that. The other thing, and I don't know if this is for Randy or for Jimmy, but I went by Friday on my way out of town and noticed the museum was open. I think we're open two days now. Have we finished whatever we were trying to do with the city with that and get that up and going and...
No, sir, we have not. The, the historical commission portion of it has taken over everything, but we haven't had an official transfer of assets yet.
Okay. It just made me think of it when I went by there and seen people coming in and out. You know, the idea is, when?
Whenever Ron and I guess can get back together. We've talked about it, but we just haven't gotten back. And I apologize to the board for that.
Yeah, it'll be good. I just thought about it. That's right, because there's not a museum, there's not a museum of horses to work on underneath that, is it?
Yeah, we, I mean, we own the assets.
Right.
We own 50%. The city owns 50%. You know? We're graciously allowing the historical commission to use them now.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Sessions?
I'm not sure if this is a fact, but if this is Dr. Jackson's last board meeting, I'm not sure if it is. I want to thank you for all you've done for the county and, and the direction that you've helped us head in. I appreciate it.
Mr. Richardson?
I echo his sentiments. Dr. Jackson's been very, very helpful in my end. And I think he's done a world of good, said that it's the best investment, I think, that this county has made in a long time. And I just hope that we can find someone that would measure up to his caliber and be able to continue to do the job that he started to do. Other than that, nothing else.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman, I echo the same thing on Dr. Jackson. It's kind of bittersweet. I know God does things for reasons, and, you know, the part that I, I really enjoyed working with you these four years. And I do have your phone number. We stay in touch with each other. But I, I do value the relationship. And it has been a very good relationship, partnership, working ship. Everything that we've done, I think, and things, and things are very good. Again, I thank you, your time spent with you. I wish you the best in your next job.
Chairman? One thing that we may need to go back and look at real quick on this additional agenda item for the tax collector, we need to go ahead and direct Finance to issue the $1,200, $12,000 to payment so that we don't have to wait for it to come back in the next...
Next year.
Check right to come back into it, so...
I thought we had already approved that.
Well, we approved it, but we didn't approve it. Go ahead.
Typically, anything that gets approved in a contractor agreement, when the actual payment occurs, they write a stack of checks over there at Finance. Then you get a register of all those things.
And you approve the checks. So if we don't approve it tonight, it'll, it'll be in the October...
So whenever it's approved payment...
We'll go ahead and approve the payment tonight. Do we need that in form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'm making the motion.
Go ahead.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sessions to go ahead and approve the payment of the tax collector. Got a second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no. All right. I got two things I want to talk about. One, real quick, we had, I don't know if this is the fourth, fifth, sixth annual Hooked on Heroes fishing trip this year, and we only sank one boat.
Literally?
That's true story.
True story.
14 miles off.
Yep.
They had about five or six-foot swells come in on them in a 21-foot boat, and it just doesn't work that way.
Thank goodness the veterans on the boat were from the Navy, so that would pay.
But it was hot, and it was, it was a neat experience. I, I had a 96-year-old, a 94-year-old, and a 78-year-old on my boat. And the two oldest gentlemen were WWII veterans. And just to listen to their stories, I mean, their, their mind was just as sharp as anybody in this room. And that's, that's, that's a lot of history. You have almost 100 years. You're thinking, he's, he's, one of them served from 43 to 46. And it was, when we're out there on that boat, and he was 96-years-old, never once did he complain. I kept saying, you know, if y'all get tired and ready to go, let me know, and we'll go on in. And they, and I, I will go in when everybody's ready to go in.
And it was hot.
And then finally, I just had to say, all right, y'all, I'm tired. I got to go in. And they're like, well, if you're tired, we'll go in. But I think the funniest moment on the boat, when they were picking on me for being young, and the 78-year-old popped off at the mouth, and the 96-year-old told him, hey, son, I got a daughter at 75. But it was a good trip. If y'all see any of those guys, Gene or Ron or BJ, that whole group that serves on that board, I'll just hats off to them. Tell them thank you for what they're doing. They're really doing a good job serving the veterans. And it's not just local veterans, it's veterans all over the community. Sheriff was there, Ms. Hill was there, I was there. You had, there's people from all over showing up, 100 boats or more showing up to take these guys out fishing. And unless you go to it and see it, you just, you don't understand the camaraderie that's among those guys from, from one that served in 1943 to one that served last year. It's, it's a neat bond to watch between them.
Out of 200-plus veterans, I got, one of the gentlemen on my boat was from Swanee County, lived in my district, and we talked about dirt roads the whole time, so it worked out pretty good.
Especially his dirt road. He told Don if he was going to swim back if he didn't get fixed. But the other thing I wanted to bring up, fellas, this, Dr. Jackson is leaving at the end of this month. And even though we jumped right on advertising and moving forward with getting the request out, we're still going to have a void there that's going to be an empty spot. And I've been thinking of different ways to try to get through that, to kind of have a point person for somebody to go to and the, maybe appointing somebody within our own departments or agencies. And everybody seems to be kind of maxed out with everything they're trying to do right now. So I reached out and talked to a couple of the people in the chamber and was kind of trying to figure out if they may be interested in stepping up in this gap. And there was a little bit of interest, and I was wanting to fill out to y'all if y'all may have any interest in trying to, just so, not necessarily really come in and do any day-to-days. We got Carissa in the office, but as a point of contact, so to speak, a face if somebody does come in, because, you know... I hope that we're through this process pretty quick, but we could wind up November, December before we're filled up. And, I mean, I, I got a call the other day from a company looking for some demographics, and immediately I referred them to Dr. Jackson. But if, if I'm out of town, or if Mr. Harris is sitting in the meeting like he was today, or if y'all are tied up, we need, we need a point person on, on key. And I probably, probably should have asked Jimmy, but I asked his board instead. But they're going to have a meeting tomorrow, and it needs to go between there, before their whole board, I guess. And I thought tonight might be a good night for us to give Mr. Harris some direction if we thought that was something we wanted to do, to kind of hold us over in the meantime. The last thing I want to do is to miss something. And if there is a, another week or so that Dr. Jackson's going to be here, if there's anything that he needs to rely on, I know him and Jimmy have been working close together. Jimmy's familiar with the TDC. So if we have any TDC issues that come up over the next two months or however long it is before we have this position filled, that, you know, there's somebody there, kind of as a point person. Just thoughts, any feedback y'all have?
Would this be an, an acting position or just basically filling in volunteer type of thing?
I didn't really put that much thought into it. I just wanted to get y'all's feedback, see what y'all wanted to do, what y'all wanted to come up with, and...
Volunteer sounds good.
Volunteer sounds no good, but you get what you pay for. I just say, there's great volunteers out here, but a lot of times you would pay for. I, I would...
Well, I mean, that's, if, 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 if Dr. Jackson's leaving at the end of this month, there, there, there is money, it's budgeted for his salary for this. I mean, Jimmy's obviously paid by the, and his staff's paid by the chamber. And he's got duties that are not county duties. So, I mean, I don't know how you would come about coming to something with them, but I'm not going to ask somebody to send him over here for free if, if he's, I, I don't know what that amount would be, but, I mean, he's, he's not our employee. So, I mean, I don't want to send him over there and say, hey, we want him to volunteer for us. It wouldn't be a direct payment to him, but, I mean, we may have to reimburse the chamber or something.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I certainly did say this, I certainly hate to miss out on an opportunity that when Dr. Jackson's gone and, and actually Mr. Harris is not available, you're not available, and then, you know, we're all busy and tied up, and, and there's an opportunity to present itself, and we don't have someone. We, we, we need, most certainly need an individual, chamber, TDC.
Well, I just give you an example. We, we've got, isn't there something coming up in October? There's a, a summit or something, isn't there?
Yeah, there's a rural summit. And I think Commissioner Fleming and Jimmy will be attending, attending that summit. And, and if I can just chime in, Chairman?
Yes, please.
I, I do concur. I think even yesterday, we got a call in about 175, 136, some property actually that just has been purchased, and that they're very much interested. And, and I think you really need to have someone that can give information and, you know, Jimmy through the chamber, I mean, basically, he knows the demographic information, he knows the sites and so forth. I, I just think you would be doing a disservice to your effort by not having someone respond to, to the calls and the, and the requests. Clearly, those calls will come into the office. Carissa can, you know, at that point, forward those calls to Jimmy to actually follow up and respond. And, and basically, she can request from them what, what type of information that they're looking for, and it gives you an opportunity to prepare you and, and answer in responding.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just simply say, I, I agree with everything that's been said, your sentiments, our need, and I, I'll add this, that I think by having somebody in that position, even in a part-time, in a, in a part-time type of way or a, whenever needed type of way, allows us the due diligence, the time to have due diligence on selecting a candidate that would best represent our county and, and do what needs to be done, instead of pushing us in a position...
Well, that was, that was the other thing that I had thought about, too, is with us having a... having a void there, I didn't want us to rush through the selection process, and maybe take the risk of hiring somebody that, on a whim, thinking we had to fill, fill a void. I'd rather, you know, us be in control and not feel like we were rushing through the process, because if we get as many applications that I've had requests for, then, you know, we're gonna have to do our due diligence to go through each one of those and select, because the process that I was thinking that we would do would be the same that we did before, where we take the bulk of the applications and narrow it down to two per commissioner, and then interview those ten. If we get as many as I think we might, by the time you have done your personal interviews and called and reached out to them, it may take you a little bit of time. So, I don't, I don't want to rush through anything.
And Chairman, you know, I will be available. I mean, I have a, a very good understanding commission, and they know that we were very active over here, and I would be available to, you know, respond, and may not be, you know, right on time, but at least Jimmy and myself can collaborate on where the information is. So, I just want to say, I'm, I'm available for consultation.
And, and his overall board may say, "No, I just want to," since they were meeting tomorrow, and we were meeting today, to at least have the opportunity to present that to them tomorrow, and see if we could come up with an agreement between the two boards.
Would he be agreeable to, to work part-time, or what, free?
He'll do what they, he'll do what they tell him to do. We don't have to ask him, we ask them.
Hopefully, they'll see the value in doing something like that.
Chamber's very active right now. I'd be surprised if they said no, but, I mean, it's still their decision to make.
Yeah. So, do we need to present them with a, with a, just a, you know, the thing that we'd be, we'd be ready to sit down and negotiate with them, or we want to present them with something so they can respond to at the meeting tomorrow? Is that what you're asking?
I, yeah, if y'all just, I don't know, but need it in a motion, or just everybody to agree to it, and I'll go tomorrow and...
Just keep gauged their interest, and if they're, if they do have the interest, then we can, we still got two weeks before the next meeting, and if we can banner back and forth to get some kind of outline and numbers from them, you know, then maybe we'll have something by the next meeting for y'all to look at.
I think we could get by with Jimmy, if, I mean, maybe scrape by, but...
Chairman, if I could...
Yes, sir.
I'm service treasurer for the Chamber of Commerce and on the executive committee, and we would definitely want to see continuity within our community when it comes to economic development and the progress, because having been an economic developer for a many number of years, companies call, and they don't give you three days or four days to respond, they give you twenty-four hours to respond. And I know that Jimmy and Al would have been working well together. Our Chamber of Commerce has been working well with our entire community and all aspects of the community, and we would certainly consider a memorandum of agreement or understanding how we can help facilitate the process while y'all look for a replacement. So, I think that our board would certainly be open to a positive discussion, and we're meeting in the morning at seven-thirty, so...
I might not be there.
Well, we'll talk about you, and then we can show up, and we'll let you know what was discussed. But, but we will certainly be, be happy to have a discussion relative to that.
Thanks, sir. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm good.
My alarm goes off, I'll show up.
I'll call you about five.
No, you...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna go all the way out to his house.
All right, so that's took care of, one last thing, I think it was last Thursday, they had a mix and mingle, the chamber put on down in Brantford, at the Filling Fort. Jimmy, how many people showed up that mix and mingle?
Four hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Wow.
They asked that, she was walking there.
It was packed, and they did an excellent job. The, the hostess, the, the Filling Fort, a lot of people that are here tonight were there, and just hats off to the chamber being on the south end of the county. I told Jimmy that one event should have fulfilled that line item that Mr. Richardson wanted for the south end, so we took care of that.
Well, I apologize. I apologize publicly for not being able to be there. Unfortunately, the, there was no flights out of California to get back.
But just another example of that, the, the good work that's going on within the community, economic development, chamber, and their reaching out. Matter of fact, we got two board members here, and if Betty was here, we'd almost have a quorum. But, anyway, if anybody got anything else, then not, we'll just need a motion to adjourn.
Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rob, about the Hooked on Heroes, just...
Oh, yes, sir.
Let everybody know that this Friday at Elks Lodge, the sheriff's office having a fundraiser forum, chicken rice, six dollars a meal, so anybody that'd like to come by and, and help with the Hooked on Heroes for the funding, come by and grab us a meal, will be there, firm from eleven to one. And I want to thank Commissioner Haley and Commissioner Campbell for coming out and, and bringing, bringing the votes out and giving the veterans a ride. Thank y'all.
Thanks, sir. I'll tell you, any of y'all that want to look on their Facebook page, they posted probably two hundred pictures of the veterans on there. It's, it's worthwhile.
I think it was on channel twenty-seven, too. It was on channel twenty-seven, news they did a report on.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All right, thank y'all.